My only course of action to proceed here is the election of the new board chairman. After that, I will turn it over to that chairman. There's two ways to proceed. Last time I did this, basically I took nominations for chairman. We can do it that way. Or this is the one time we can actually do, legally do a secret ballot.
Let's do the secret ballot.
You want to do a secret ballot? What I will ask then, I'm hoping everybody has the pink ones, posted notes in front of them. If you please write... Please write the name of who you seek to be the chairman. And then I will go and gather those up and read ultimately the vote counts. With three votes, John Lutz is the new board chair for the village. Sutherland, so John, do you want to come up here? Now I hand meeting back over to the new chairman.
Okay, now we need to go on and reelect the vice chairman. The secret ballot again.
It's just up to this moment. Yeah, that would be fine. We have no majority vote. What we can do is one of the two, top two vote getters can have one more round.
Run off.
Yep. So I will ask for one more secret ballot. Your two choices are John Sauer and Mr. Ravenscroft. Ravenscroft, you are the new vice chairman.
Lucky dog.
It's lucky, dude.
Okay, now we get a reappointment of our employees. Oh, the committee, sorry about that. The fire and rescue. I'm on the fire and rescue. Jim, do you want to stay on there with me or...
At this time, no, I'll pass.
Pass? Okay. Well, I'm going to stay on there unless anybody jacks it. Water and sewer, streets planning commission, Scott Myers is on there. Does anybody want to take that?
Better than me.
Dave, you want that?
You can blame whoever.
Okay, Dave, Dave on his bar. Okay, the librarian parks. Rob Money is on there. How about Ray? Do you know anything about a park?
I guess I'll learn, huh?
Recycling landfill radio grounds, John Sauer, you want to just stay there?
Yeah.
Okay. Law enforcement investments keynote was Rob Money. Jim, do you want to jump on that since you got off the...
Well, I've done that one before.
Okay, I'll do that. And then the growth committee.
I can do that if you want. It's so much fun. I just hate to miss out on that.
Okay. Jim, what? Okay, we're good on the committees. Okay, the reappointment of employees. I think I'd like to move that down to the bottom. Go ahead and get the rest of this out of the way first. If that's okay with anybody, everybody.
I'll second that if you got it tomorrow.
Do we need that motion?
No, I mean you can...
We're just going to move it to the bottom?
We're just not actually...
Do we need to adjourn?
Yeah, we need to adjourn. Well, we can't fully adjourn the organizational meeting because those haven't been adjourned. So what you can do, we will just adjourn at the end of the meeting. So just move forward.
End of the meeting, okay. Yeah, we're going to wait until the end of the meeting to adjourn.
And reopen.
Reopen. Okay, now we have our growth committee resignation.
So how can you reopen new business without reopening a regular meeting, Rory?
Well, we are at this point keeping the organizational meeting open. But it is, we're keeping it open and then reopening our regular...
Okay, so you are reopening everything.
For the rest time. Correct.
Okay, the resignation of the growth committee. One of the clerks would like to read that. See what we want to do with that.
From Nick Maxi, the growth committee, dear Sutherland growth committee, with regret that I tender my resignation from the village of Sutherland growth committee effective December 12th, 2016. I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to serve on the committee and I offer my best wishes for its continued success. Sincerely, Nick Maxi. They accepted this with regret.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to accept the resignation.
I make a motion to accept resignation.
I'll second that.
Do we need a vote?
Yep.
Ray? Bliss?
Yes.
Einzfire?
Yes.
Lex?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
It's kind of a mouthful there, Sam.
I ain't going to screw that up anytime soon. Okay.
Okay, so now we need to reappoint, reappointments for the growth committee. Do we need to do these individually or...
You could do them as a slate. You can entertain a motion for a slate.
Okay, we need a motion to reelect Dorothy Raymond.
I make a motion to reappoint or elect Dorothy Raymond and Rebecca Cockrell for the growth committee.
I'll second it.
We need a vote.
Einzfire?
Yes.
Lex?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Now we go to the library, librarian resignation.
I didn't get a copy of her full resignation. The minutes say...
Is that Katie?
Yeah, Katie Smith will be resigning in February. So they do the whole hiring and all that.
Right, they set the wages, do everything right. But we still need to reappoint the directors or whatever they are.
Yeah, you don't have to accept her resignation though.
So we, okay, we're done with that. We're going to... Do we have to accept these?
You do. You have to reappoint, correct.
Okay, we need a motion to reappoint on the library board, Arlos Palmer, Kelly Capps, and Jane Moore.
I'll make a motion to accept the reappointments for the library board of Arlos Palmer, Kelly Capps, and Jane Moore.
I'll second.
Okay, we need to vote now.
Lex?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Uh, you?
Yes.
Bliss? Einzfire?
Yes.
Board of adjustments, reappointments. We need a motion to reappoint Casey Nelms and Ken Maine.
I'll make a motion to accept the reappointments of Casey Nelms and Ken Maine from the board of adjustments.
I'll second it.
Okay, we need a vote.
Sauer?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Okay.
Einzfire?
Yes.
Lex?
Yes. Okay, the park board, pool manager and assistant manager recommendations.
Was that pretty close to where they were last time?
Yeah.
A little bit higher.
There you go. There we go. Did you read the park board recommendations?
At park board's special meeting on December 5th, 2016, the park board members held interviews for the position of pool manager, assistant manager for the 2017 swimming season. The motion seconded and voted in favor of all recommendation to hire Jewel Samson as manager at an hourly wage of $13.25, Shelby Burke as assistant manager at an hourly wage of $12.25, and Jocelyn Burke as second assistant manager at an hourly wage of $11.
Okay, so we need a motion individually or...
We could do a slate of individuals actors.
Okay, we need a motion for the manager and the two assistant managers for the pool.
Can I, have these people worked there before?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Do you need a motion for the pool manager?
All of them.
We could do one of them.
All of them, yeah.
At the identified rate, yeah.
I make a motion to accept the positions that were interviewed as...
Pool manager and assistant...
Jewel Samson manager, Shelby Burke as assistant manager, and Jocelyn Burke as second assistant manager.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Now we need a vote.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Einzfire?
Yes.
Lex?
Yes.
Sauer?
Now we have the fire department, new members. I guess can we have the new members come up here? See who they are? Yeah. Anybody want to ask the new members any questions? Why did you want to be on the fire department? That's right for them. Anybody else? Great. Dave?
Not really, I guess.
Dave was on the fire department for three years.
I've been under 10, 12 years, yeah, so...
Maybe we should be asking the questions. I will introduce myself. My name is Tyrell Wilson. I grew up in Holland originally. I started out at GGS roughly two and a half years ago. And since being out there in operations, I get quite a bit of experience with firefighting out there in the industrial world. So I figured since I'm doing it there and I'm actually one of the fire shooters out there, that guy standing in the corner.
Really? He's always in the corner.
I'll do everything you know.
I just learned it from him. I learn from the guys that know something. Hired. You're hired. But anyway, so he's been telling me this for about two years to get on. In the first year, I was reluctant, but this past year I went and got a little bit more training and just had to... If I'm going to get it there, I might as well expand it even more, so I'm not going to make it back that way.
And one thing about Tyrell is he's on a rotating shift. And you know the problem we have during the day getting people to respond?
Right.
A lot of times he's going to be in town, and we work the night or long weekends. That helps us eliminate some of our problems that we're having with our daytime calls.
Yeah, we need all the help we can get, right?
Are you interested in maybe an EMT in order on?
Yeah, also.
Yeah. My name is Marley Scott. I guess I'm more of the EMS, EMT side. That's kind of what I'm more interested in. Kind of getting my foot in the door and learning from some of these people who know a little bit more than I do. But long term is getting EMT, making EMT classes and just kind of getting my foot in the door and learning some stuff from these people, so...
We've got to be a little bit on the medical anyhow.
Yeah, that's kind of the road I'm taking right now, so...
Okay, so, sounds great. I'm glad you guys are volunteering. We need a motion to accept...
Well, I thank you for volunteering and I guess I'll make a motion to accept them.
I'll second.
You seconded it.
Yeah.
Now we need a vote.
Bliss?
Yeah.
Einzfire?
Yes.
Lex?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
We really need the help.
Congratulations.
We need some youngsters like you guys.
Yep, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Okay, other new business. Electors, electrical plant, door bid.
There's a couple bids here besides construction. This is for that 12-foot door we're putting in on that alley, fixing that to utilize that back part. And then that other door to the east. We've got two bids in there. Chilling one we already got after we advertised it. I would recommend hiring him for it through the previous spring. You can't really cut the wall and stuff out and have it open until it warms up. You can't really utilize it for equipment or anything until you get a bigger door to leak and drive through. And this is a budget.
Has he ever cut in any block walls like that before?
He is hiring it, one. He's got...
So you got a bid to cut and then a bid for...
Well, it's all together. I mean, it'll all be through site of construction. But he's got, the company's using it on North Flat. I can't remember what his name is, but he got it for ice room. The one will be cut out for the 12 by 12 door. The other one's going to be fit in the existing opening. Take out the windows and put an 8 by 10, I believe is what he got on the ground. And that 12 by 12, we already have. It's one of the old ones we kept, one of the better, the old ones for the never to play this.
You don't want to do this until spring then now?
Yeah, it'll be, well, I mean, he's, he's going to have to open it up one day. You don't want to cut it, cut it one day and then close it back up. Then Steve is one day. So he's talking when it warms up, so...
This is the only bid you got or did you go out for any more than just this one or...
This has been advertised. Nobody did it. I finally, I boughed him a couple of times and finally got a real thing. But that advertising, the paper and stuff, and he didn't get no responses.
So what did you say, John? That bathroom needs to be utilized so they can get that maintained inside all the time.
Where's it at now?
Well, right now it's inside, but in the summertime, we're, it's at an outside. That's not good.
Well, if we can't do this until spring anyway, maybe we should just wait for some more bids springtime.
You can see what comes in.
So you want to re-advertise them as you're telling me? Or do you want me just to ask people? So it had been advertised once and they didn't get no response. Advertising is not cheap in the papers. I mean, I could contact other people, North Flat overhead and AGs or whatever.
Well, I don't know. Whatever the other rest of board members want to do.
Well, I just wanted to see it's how we kept. Got to wait till spring. Why don't we just table it? And we'll work on this in the next couple of coming months before. Because you're not going to be able to start until, what, March, first of April?
Oh, probably, yeah.
And...
A lot of these people need to get their work contracted because they get busy.
See if we can get something figured out on it.
So we want to re-advertise it as you're telling me?
In the spring.
Rory, can we have a motion to clarify that?
Yeah, we probably do. So basically, I believe, let me slow down the speed here. Basically, a motion to table this until, it's got a date.
Make a motion to table it until a later date in January, February, and possibly get some different bids on it.
Okay.
So clarify it.
Well, pick them up. I mean, basically...
Okay. February, February, February 30th, maybe not that.
28th? Okay.
That'd work good.
End of February?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll just table it until the end of February.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and then we need a vote.
Einzfire?
Yes.
Lex?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
Other new business, welcome in.
This is over at work, Palmer and Green, things.
Is there any problems with it?
Not as far as our well protection, no.
What's the use of it going to be? Do you say?
Pivot, I believe. It's some kind of underground pivot system.
They say an air gate for one and a half. It must be every evening that ground, right beside Kellup there.
Between co-op and this, oh, fence and up and down.
So we just need a motion to accept this? Do you guys want to discuss it some more?
I like to live with that.
And all three of the chairmen.
How big a well is it? Oh, six inch.
Casey, six inch, 120 foot deep, 63 gallons a minute.
Legally, we can't be past. It's more than 50 gallons a minute. We're in a moratorium. Must seem our DCS out there.
What are the words for it here?
Yes.
Moratorium over 50 gallons a minute?
The maximum 50 gallons a minute.
That's what I was wondering.
That's a 63.
So we need to notify Rort to, he needs to check with NRD.
Yeah, because the NRD control, I mean, they have, I'm not sure how they control that, but I know there's any, even these wells, there was no that.
So we just need to table this and then talk to them.
And we'll see what we got going.
Yeah.
I didn't say that.
That's all we got. Okay. Motion, need a motion to table.
I make a motion to table the well for Rort. Till we find out more information, talk to Rort or whatever, NRD, somebody.
We got a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Now we need a vote.
Let's.
Yes.
Sour?
Yes.
Ravenscroft? Bliss?
Yeah.
I inspire.
Yes.
Yeah, other new business, Garden Club Christmas lighting contest.
Every year the Garden Club requests fifty dollars in Keno funds to give for prize money for their Christmas lighting contest.
So we need a motion to donate fifty dollars to Keno Fund? To the Garden Club for their lighting contest, so we got a motion.
I'll make a motion to donate fifty dollars to the Garden Club for their lighting contest.
From Keno?
Out of the Keno Fund, yep.
We got a second?
I'll second it.
Now we need a vote.
Sour?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Let's?
Yes. Other new business, proclamation of National School Choice Week.
Um, I got this letter in the mail from National School Choice Week, um, they were asking, I'm writing to, bless you. I just make people sneeze, Larry. To respectfully request that you issue an official proclamation commemorating January twenty-second through the twenty-eighth as Sutherland Township School Choice Week. Held every Jan- January National School Choice Week shines a spotlight on effective education options for children. Including traditional public schools, public charter schools, public magnet schools, private schools, online learning and homeschooling. There's also a list of cities and counties who have already proclaimed their school choice week proclamations.
So do we need to do anything with this?
If you want to proclaim National School Choice Week as January twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, there is a... There's language in there, it's a proclamation language, kind of like Arbor Day, yeah, so that's up to you guys.
Probably need to do that.
I'd put, basically, their language and put in a doc, that's me. I'll just make it a note, all day.
Just, yeah, we just need to move it to the next meeting, so.
Yeah, I could draft it, if you guys are direct, I need to get that cleaned up and draft it.
Well, I think we probably should look into it, at least. If you can do that. Got nothing else there, then? Other new business, spending limit for recognition dinner?
Um, we usually spend two hundred dollars for the recognition dinner for prizes, but we need that authorization.
But we already approved that.
You approved where it was, you wanted it?
Yeah, I thought we approved the, I thought we approved the.
You approved the.
Money, too.
Well, not for the, not for the prizes, you didn't, you approved it for the.
For the dinner?
Bill bonus or something, did you hear that?
That was our work incentive, I, I, I don't, I don't have it, so.
I don't think it was, I don't remember hearing anything when I was sitting out there about the price.
But you got your dinner and stuff, right, you gotta have money for that?
Yeah, that doesn't, two hundred dollars don't cover.
I thought that was like five hundred before, wasn't it, wasn't that what we did?
It's closer to that, uh, for prizes, I don't know, the dinner, all the others.
No, for the, for the dinner.
That costs over twelve hundred dollars.
And that's already been done, then, or?
No, that's, that's all budgeted, we invite everybody, and then we gotta get reimbursement from our fire board for the spouses and.
Okay, well, this is just for the, for two hundred and fifty dollars, okay.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to accept this spending limit of two hundred and fifty dollars for the recognition dinner.
I'll make that motion.
We need a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, dude, now we need a vote.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Let's?
Yes.
Sour?
Yes.
Now we need, the other new, oh, we need to, we're gonna wave the disconnect for December, we need a motion for that.
If you would like to, disconnect's following the twenty-third.
This is kind of what you always do, right? Wave the disconnection for December for the water bills.
That's of every month, the water, uh.
Yeah, it's just because of holidays, right?
Yeah, it falls on the twenty-third as disconnect date, and we're off the twenty-third, the twenty, I mean, we'd be shutting people off.
Right, I, yeah.
Okay, I see.
So we just need to wave it for December, need a motion to do that.
I make a motion, we wave, wave the disconnects for December.
Thanks, dude, we need a second, now.
I'll second.
Now we need a vote.
Bliss?
No.
Um, Ravenscroft? No, I'm sorry, I inspire.
Yes.
Thank you, Let's?
Yes.
Sour?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm worried about it.
I didn't call you Meyer yet, see?
Okay, new business, signature cards.
On this one, we need to, um, motion to remove the old board members and put the new members on all the bank accounts. Then I'll get a hold of the bank and have signature cards, if you guys could swing over and sign them, and you'll, you, old members will have to sign, too. You'll have to re-sign.
At the bank?
Yeah.
So, motion removal.
We need a motion to, to kind of do it.
Yeah, because I'm sure they won't take it unless they got official notice.
No, well, do we need a motion to remove the old members and?
All separate?
Yeah.
Let's just do a joint motion, it's, it's in our, like.
We need a motion to accept the new members and remove the old members from the signature cards.
On all bank accounts.
On all bank accounts, yeah.
Can a new member do that?
Come.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'll make a motion to, for the signature cards, the old members or the new members, that's short enough, inside.
That's the language, yeah.
Okay.
That would be second.
Now we need a second.
Oh, I'll second. Somebody should, because these guys, if you have to spend any money.
I know. Couple guys will have the party, huh? Okay, now we need a vote.
I inspire?
Yes.
Let's?
Yes.
Sour?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, that'd be, yeah, we just kept it on.
Yeah, it's taped, so it'll be re-brought up by the, the new board.
Uh, and, because that's always gonna be a pain until we ever get it straightened out.
So if you want to break that back, it's still open, so what do you want to do, was it?
Yeah, we may want to talk to Tom some more about the, the board, about later on here.
So I wish I could meet the nine thirty.
Follow the nine thirty, okay.
Yeah, those three, that one was tabled until the new board was sworn in, so it's, it's on board this morning.
So we just need to.
Discuss it and decide, whatever you guys want to do on that issue.
Okay, we need to go back to other unfinished business, nine thirty, First Street. The, little gas station that all you don't, the gas companies, yeah, right? Uh, whether we want to sell it, rent it?
I think we ought to deem it just unusable property for us.
Deem it unusable and sell it.
Yep. Unless we want to fix it up ourselves, which I'm not really in favor of.
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't been in that thing, but it probably costs money, I don't.
It's got a little rock on it here.
It's pretty tough, it's pretty tough.
But you guys want to rent it as it is, or, you been in it, or what do you?
Um, we've been in it, and, um, I think that if the village doesn't have an interest in fixing it up, then we probably have a better interest in purchasing it, so we could fix it up. Because there would be repairs we would need to do immediately before.
Immediately if we wanted to have people come in here for a painting.
Okay, so we need a.
I've been in it, yeah, there's some things you'll have to do.
We need a motion to redeem this self-unusable property.
Declare it surplus property, and then start the process.
Process.
I'll make a motion that we deem it surplus property.
I'll second that.
Okay, we need a vote.
Let's?
Yes.
Sour?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Two real points.
Okay. So Rory, would that, this is gonna stay, or do I need to advertise?
We're gonna start the, the process, they deemed it surplus, and then we're gonna advertise and, and go through the process.
And we have a motion to advertise, then, and how long we need to go, if it's gonna be sealed bids, if you're gonna do auction-style public bids?
It's all.
What do you guys want to do, auction, or just, uh, sealed bid?
Sealed bids, if they can't argue it, but the auction style, they can go back and forth.
Yeah.
Or do a combination of, like you do with your pasture gun.
Those aren't sealed, though.
Some of them are, though, they can, bids and.
Well, yeah, we'll accept them either way, yeah.
Auction, it's not for that.
Yeah.
And see, your, your pasture gun, you seem to get more out before the whole bit of auction going on. Because there's some of your hills ones. If anybody else wants it, yeah.
Then you gotta pay, you're gonna have a regular auction here, or?
No, no.
No, it's just.
No, you're gonna do it, dude.
Oh, boy. Sold!
I, I, I guess we can do an auction, I don't know if there's gonna be any more interest in it anyhow, I.
Well, isn't the big thing's gonna be, we have to cut it off from that tank, the property, and get that off?
That tank's gone?
The tanks, no.
Yeah.
The tanks gone, everything.
Put the whole property, and then everything will go with it? Is that what you're thinking? Oh, it's only gonna be one deal, then?
It alr- it already is one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Rory, you could buy it, open a dog kennel, or something.
Yeah, I could do that, but I'm not going to. I think your idea of a gift shop.
Be the dog, be the cat dog kennel.
We're just hopeful to improve our community, and, um, Steve Cypher knew that wasn't gonna be rented, and, you know, he has all sorts in town, and, you know, it'd be beneficial to Sutherland to have a couple of businesses for people to attract to, and just develop our downtown, and that's what we're in, if we can, so. We're hopeful, but as to come at a reasonable cost as well. Because there's lots of repairs that have to go to it.
Like, like you said, I don't see a.
Yeah, I think you probably get it pretty reasonable, probably.
Yeah, I would think, but.
Well, we're hopeful.
And the girls make really cute gifts, if you need anniversary ideas, so you marry men, you know this.
Cause they're married, and they're, they don't need it.
Hey, hey.
Yeah, that's, I'm gonna pay them, I'm not really going.
Do we need a motion to advertise, uh, auction, yeah, auction, yeah, I think so. Auction style, no, auction, Ray, auction style?
Yeah, mine gets started.
Yeah, auction style?
You're the auctioneer, so it's good to me.
And we just need a motion to do the auction stuff.
I guess I'd go for the auction.
You gotta advertise.
Advertise for an auction, yeah.
Advertise it for an auction, and, uh, then you'd know how carried away things are.
Yeah. Well, we gotta pick a date on that.
Hold on, have a say, hold on.
We have plenty of time, we've got early deadlines.
You, uh, you've got the twenty-second, twenty-ninth, January fifth, that's three weeks.
Yeah.
Before your next meeting.
So we can have it on the eleventh, if you want to.
The auction?
Yeah.
That would be advertised enough.
We advertise three.
You guys are already probably doing whatever.
Yeah, unless it's large, merciful land.
If we got a cheaper, yeah.
Sold as is.
We know a good banker.
I think you'd get a little.
Well, hopefully it can work out for you girls, that'd be a great thing if we could have something else in town. So, come to the auction, and good luck.
Okay, thanks, y'all.
So do we have the motion?
Yeah, no?
Ray made the mo- Ray made the motion.
Ray made it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, kind of made a motion, yeah.
Advertising.
We need a second, and a vote.
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
Nobody, yeah, I'll second.
Okay. I didn't think we got that far.
Well, here we do.
Sour?
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
I inspire?
Yes.
Let's?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you on the next one. Now you're just here, not watching.
No, I'm mixed up.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. I had some questions about the reappointment of the village superintendent, village clerk treasurer, village deputy clerk, village attorney, and village engineer. I don't know, I think some people would like to look into some things here before we do that. Can we table that till the next meeting?
I think that's.
I can get your code book.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you.
What is the reason for that?
Because the new members don't understand what all the wages and what the duties are, whatevers.
Uh, but, yeah, don't you, didn't you guys have your meeting today?
Yeah, so are you, um, but I haven't, really don't know what, haven't read the code book yet to see, it's in the code book, but I don't mean, had it at about fifty-eight or five-thirty, and back here at six-thirty.
I thought he was gonna go with that with you?
Well, I did a little tiny bit, they kind of, what their duties were and stuff, but was a whole lot, pretty vague, I mean.
Do you want to review your reports or anything while he does that?
Yeah, we could, the balance of accounts and stuff, Sam?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could go onto that, I guess. Reports, balance of accounts, you got them in front of you guys, you guys finding everything in there?
Yeah, yeah, so far.
Because sometimes it gets tough. And then that October income report, we don't need to vote on this.
Should be November, November, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
November income report, I miss a whole month.
Yeah, I feel for it.
That's close, I know.
We did fix this, I missed it.
Okay. Do we need anything with that?
Yeah, I'll just review it if there's any questions.
Review that, and go on to the utility re-increase.
Blackouts, account numbers, I think black ones out.
And I don't know, you guys, I have Sam emailing me all this stuff, this packet before, so I can.
Yeah, we should, we should, we give her our, we give her our email address.
Makes it a lot easier sometimes, that if you want to spend some time reading it, you can. Okay, we got superintendent report?
Well, the only thing I got, the water main project's going slow.
That's what we figured, that was kinda-
Thought it was going, is it?
It happened this week, no.
At least, at least they got the barricades down on the highway before somebody got killed there. Yeah, that was pretty sad.
Not working very fast at all.
Right.
Yeah, it should've waited a tough burn.
It's a tough time of year for them to do that kind of project, yeah.
It's kinda like, somebody needs to get ahold of the department of roads, the speed limit going through town, and tell you to pass that intersection out there where it comes off the overpass, should stay at forty mile an hour.
I, I wish it was about thirty all the way through.
And coming back the other way, it should cut down before it gets to that, we get that traffic off of I-30 after wrecks and stuff, there's a lot of traffic there. There's a good chance we're gonna have a heck of a wreck, and I noticed over by Hershey-
Lucky, we are.
Over at Hershey, they cut that down to forty-five before you ever get there.
Before you get to the ramp?
Yeah.
The ramp, the runway thirty?
Before you get to the, yeah.
Do, do ski slope? But that's something we need to look into, or somebody does.
Right. Yeah, I don't know, I think that's tough to even do anything with the state, isn't it, Ken?
Well, it, it got brought up once before, and they argued the point, well, we can't slow traffic down from sixty-five to forty that fast, and that was as far as it went.
Right.
Well, they can cut it down.
But, yeah, they can, they can take it further, like they did at Hershey.
Yeah, that's a long ways out there where they cut it down.
Well, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, it should be thirty all the way through anyway.
I probably wouldn't hurt either, but forty at least, get it down.
Do we need the clerk, report, you got anything, Sam?
No.
Trustee's reports, Jim?
No.
Dave?
No, I got anything.
Ray? John? I don't have anything.
Okay, um, under the code, uh, chapter one, section two oh one, says the board may appoint a clerk, treasurer, utility superintendent, and street commissioner. Um, so that it's up to the board whether or not to appoint those people. The current people that exist under this statute, their term, um, expires after one year. So essentially, um, all appointed officials, employed, appointed employees' term will expire essentially at this meeting.
Okay, can we make a motion to temporarily keep them in place until the next meeting?
If you do such things, it is required to operate the village, I guess.
Yeah, to do such thing, I guess we need a motion to-
I, I guess, I got a question, what's the problem? I mean, they do a heck of a job.
There's been a lot of complaints and questions, and I've been asked about them, and I maybe just wanna do a little interviewing and renewing, and go on this with good faith, and hopefully we can all be a team here. I think it's been a little ways away from that for a while.
I, I just look at the employees, they die.
But I guess we can vote on it, and have a motion if we have one, or a second, you know, whoever. Motion to just keep everybody-
Well, yeah, what, what a motion would need to do would be to, I guess, for the purposes of, of one month, or however you wanna do this, appoint, um, these employees, um, and, and other professionals for services-
Right.
Village attorney, village engineer, uh, for, for a term of, of one month to then be, or however many days, I mean, if you wanna do it, until the twenty-fifth and revisit it, or however you wanna do it, but it, officially, the term expires today.
Yeah, let's, let's go on, let's just-
So that'd be until the twenty-fifth of January, then?
Correct, basically, the, the board will appoint, um, whoever, these people, whatever, until the twenty-fifth of January.
Why not the eleventh?
That's a bore, I mean, whatever they want.
Let's go to the twenty-fifth.
I'll make a motion to go to, uh, twenty-fifth of January.
What, can you specifically state that motion, please?
Extend employees to, uh, the twenty-fifth of January.
Just the employees? Including attorney, engineer?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, everybody on the app.
Okay.
End of January, so we said twenty-fifth, January.
Need a second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Now we need a vote.
Ravenscroft?
Yes.
Uh, Bliss?
No.
Einspire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Sour?
No. Um, for purposes of this, since the organizational meeting is, well, I guess essentially, it, yeah, it'll be done, so you'll need to make sure you adjourn it when you adjourn everything else, does that make sense?
No, I really adjourned the-
Organi-, reorganization.
Oh, the re-, okay. Okay, so we need a, we're good there on all that, we need a motion to-
Good on that, I don't, I don't know.
Adjourn the reorganization meeting. And nobody's lost their jobs or anything, it's just gonna be visited a little bit between now and then, so everybody's-
Correct, or the, the, the code section-
Nothing's wrong, I mean-
That, the code section that allows the board to appoint such people to basically keep the village running, and that's not exactly, you are appointing those employees, as well as the professional service people, for a period until January twelfth. That's, that's what's happening here, so no, nobody-
And we re-, re-point or appoint or whatever, and do it until it's here.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, we're good with all of this. Yeah, we did, why you was, yeah, we did all that. Uh, we're now to adjourn the reorganizational meeting, we need a motion to do that?
I make a motion to adjourn the reorganizational meeting.
I need a second.
Second.
Now we need a vote.
Bliss?
Yeah.
Einspire?
Yes.
Lutz?
Yes.
Sour?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ravenscroft?
Yes, I'll say this, I'll say this.
Now we need a, now we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question before you adjourn the meeting, please. Could you please discuss the utility rate increase, what is being considered?
Yeah, what do you wanna know about it?
I'd like to know what, um, you're looking at increasing, um, water and sewer-
Oh, the water and sewer, it's-
Six thirteen sixty-four.
That, where Jack, or back there.
Could the utility rate increase report be separate? That's the past ones, but you want the actual ordinances, Linda? Okay, yeah, you betcha, we got copies of those things, honey.
Okay, she's getting it to her, but-
So the utility rate increases, the past increases we've done, go into a separate account, so that we can pay the loans and the bonds that we raised those for with that money?
Well, I guess, before we adjourn, I would like to mention something to the clerk. Uh, could we print some more copies, sometimes people don't get, you know, they don't know what we're talking about. Can we do a few more?
How many do you want?
I don't know, twenty?
Had, had quite a few tonight, but, I mean, I, some nights don't, I mean-
You want twenty packets?
Yeah, well, for these meetings, when you're gonna have stuff, I don't know, Sam.
He's supposed to actually-
But people don't know what's going on.
If we went to ten, and then I can share a little bit?
Yeah, let's go with ten.
So that everybody knows.
That, okay, I mean, people need to know what's going on.
So everybody knows what's happening.
Turner likes to know what's going on.
Turner has a packet.
I'm getting an email to me now, that's-
I already have the packet, okay, so you can read it beforehand, too. I know, that's what I like, Turner, so I kinda know it.
Oh, you can have it two months?
No, I'm saying, that would pay for a projector, ten packets at every meeting would pay for a projector in a month.
I, I think we need to look into that, too, I like it, I think we projected on the wall, and everybody could see.
Now, Sam, we had that, we bought that one outfit, and it didn't work, right, it failed?
No, no.
And, do we need to look into something else, would that be easier than printing all the?
I, I would put it on the next.
Let's put it on the next agenda, okay, to look into the projection thing. Yeah, okay.
Let's see if the minutes can be posted on the internet somewhere, if there's a Facebook page, or we have a social media page.
No, in order to do that, I gotta give them two molly marketing to put on there, and it's kind of a process, but, yep. Unless we want that on the next agenda, too, what do you think, Rory?
Wait, if, wanna discuss, I didn't-
Go ahead, put it on there, we can look into it. I'm open for any suggestions, that way, I know, I've heard other complaints before, people didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, like I said, in school, they, everybody sees what they're seeing, they project it, but they probably haven't.
Yeah, Turner?
I just wanna make a comment, I'm taking my newspaper hat off and putting my citizen hat on, what kind of newspaper, but, uh, I just wanna say that I have appreciated the professionalism, um, as far as what has been done from this office here. Uh, the level of accuracy in the minutes that, that I am receiving now is much better than any I have ever received in my twenty-two years here. Um, and, and I think that it's really important when we're looking at people's lives and livelihoods, that there be a respect there. I have a deep concern that people may feel threatened, that they're not gonna have a job, and they'll go find one where they're not gonna feel threatened, and then who's gonna type that stuff, and who's gonna do the job?
Well, I, I said, nobody's firing anybody here, we're just looking into things.
No, no, but I, I'm, I'm not saying that it did, I'm saying that, that the language, to me, feels threatening, and you'd have people with contracts and things, and I realize that it has to be addressed, and that's appropriate, but I'm very concerned for the, for the continuity of the business of the village itself. That if you end up with holes and gaps, you're not gonna fill them, and there's a legal requirement, and, and the attorney can tell you that, and have things published within a certain amount of time, and of course, that's what I deal with. Um, we have all kinds of things going on, say, with the village engineer, you know, all kinds of projects in the middle of something. I just wanna see a, a, a real respect and a continuity here, and I, I'm concerned that we're gonna end up with some gaps because people feel as if they have no, no future. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second that.
Now we need a vote.
Sour?
Yes.
Raven, look at that. Bliss? Einspire?
Yes.
Lutz? Merry Christmas, guys.